I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a Redmond City Council study session held on Tuesday, April 11th, 2023, commencing at 7:01 PM. This meeting is being held in Redmond City Hall, Council members. The community can attend council meetings in person, view meetings on Facebook Live, RCTV, Comcast Channel 21 or 321, and Zipley Channel 34, or listen live by calling 510-335-7371. Council members in attendance are Carson, Stuart, Anderson, Fields, and myself, Forsythe. First item on the agenda is the process for updating the mayor's salary. Catherine Laird, Human Resources Director, will introduce the item. Hello, Catherine.
Hello, President Forsythe. Thank you so much, and hello, council. It's great to be here tonight and to continue discussing the mayor's salary. I'm Catherine Laird, your HR Director, and Melissa Files, Chief Operating Officer, is joining me tonight as we work together to help you finalize the mayor's salary. I want to give a huge shout out again to Mary Grady, Senior HR Analyst, who has helped me extensively gather the data and updating data in Appendix A, which she received and which we will reference throughout this discussion. So as a reminder, during our study session on March 28th, I indicated you have three decisions to make: base salary for the mayor, but there was no decision that we made last month; car allowance, no decision was made on that one; and effective date. A decision was made and agreed that the effective date would be January 1st of 2024. So our agenda tonight is going to focus on two outstanding, on the two outstanding decisions, and based on the data and information you've been provided, we will discuss the city's recommendation for the following. So we're going to start with the mayor's base salary discussion, and then, second, the mayor's car allowance. So what I need is, I'm seeking your final decision tonight on the mayor's salary and car allowance and approval to add your final decision to the May 16th council consent agenda. All right, so with that, then, we will start with the discussion regarding the mayor's base salary. What I'm going to do, first of all, as a reminder, the mayor's base salary is $145,000, and it was last updated on January 1st of 2020. So I'm going to start with our recommendation, and then we can go from there. So our recommendation is to increase the mayor's salary to match the top of the directors in the executive EX-15 pay band, and that is $215,256. The EX-15 pay band includes the Chief Information Officer, the Finance, HR, Parks, and Planning Directors. It is important to separate the who in the role of the actual requirement of the job for the mayor. The mayor's role is the city's Chief Executive Officer, the top position with the most accountability for the successful management of city services. The CEO has hiring and firing authority, is accountable for strategic implementation of council legislation, and ensures the efficient and successful operations of city services based upon identified strategies, visions, and goals. There is a high degree of liability in decisions that must consider internal policy, external laws, and other compliance requirements. I'm going to pass it over to Melissa.
So we're going to, as Catherine said, we provided you with our first recommendation, and we were hoping for a thumbs up or thumbs down so we can get a sense of where council is in the mayor's salary as we continue to discuss it. So the recommendation is, as Catherine said, the top of the directors' executive EX-15 pay plan, which would be $215,256. So I'm hoping we can get a thumbs up, thumbs down, thumbs sideways, need to ask questions or need more information.
Anybody want to go first? Anyone want to lead conversation? Councilmember Fields, please.
So one of the things I've always struggled with is this combination that came under the prior mayor where we added the COO, and I've never been real clear on how we, what the mayor does, what the COO does. I'm not sure that I want to go into that tonight, but I would like to know, what was the COO salary in relation to the mayor's salary the last time we changed the mayor's salary? And is that COO salary significantly, or how much higher is it, and is that part of what's driving this recommendation for $215,000? Or what is the, I know that's a convoluted question, but if you could just give me some clarification about the impact that the COO salary has on the mayor's salary?
So first question was, you wanted some historical information for the COO, so I'm going to have to look that up, and I might be able to do that here tonight, I just don't have it right in front of me. As far as the difference between the COO versus the mayor, so we're not, right now, we're not recommending that the mayor's salary go to the same level as the COO or higher than the COO. The Chief Operating Officer, right now, the maximum of the salary range is $248,928. So we're looking to just go to the top, there's two tiers of director pay levels, and so we're recommending going to the top, to the maximum of the, lower of the two tiers for directors, at the $215,256. So...
Okay. And if I can just follow up on a question, I wasn't here, was it last week? I don't know, whenever it was.
March 28th.
I'd given some questions to Council President Forsythe. I'm not sure there was a clear answer on one of the questions, and I know that it may seem unrelated to this, but it was not clear to me, how did, who made the decision, and how did the decision get made that the council would be considered quarter time? Is that, is there state law that governs that? Did a previous Redmond City Council decide that? Did that come out of the city? How did we come to that conclusion of what the council would be with respect to full-time, half-time, quarter time?
I don't know that I can fully answer that question as to the why.
No, I'm sorry, not why.
I mean, how. Yeah, I don't know how. I can just, all I know is that there is no indication of the number of hours that council is required to work.
Oh, yeah, again, I think technically, though, we are seen as quarter time. Is that correct? I mean, did I misunderstand that? I think we're classified as quarter time.
I can answer the question.
But it looks like Councilmember Carson may have...
I think I may be able to answer the question. So I, and this has been eight or 10 years ago, but we were considered quarter time for, in terms of benefits, because it was, it was kind of assumed that each council member roughly works on an average week, roughly 10 hours a week, given the regional meetings that we have, the committee meetings, the, obviously, Tuesday evening meetings, the reading that goes into the background of all the things that we see and vote on. So that's where that quarter time came from. It was, it was really for determining benefits, because we, you had to put something there. You have, you have to specify for, in terms of what we receive as, for benefits, some kind of either salaried, like, and so we were considered salaried at quarter time, quarter of, so a 10-hour work week, roughly.
And that was, the city council made that?
No, I think it was a previous HR director, the, I mean, it was kind of like, you know, we talked about it, and, you know, it was kind of arrived at, I guess would be the way to put it, because we had to have some amount of time that is considered, you know, what we do, and we're clearly not full-time, so, and it was considered quarter time because 10 hours a week is roughly what, when we did a survey around the table, you know, you kind of think back, okay, what did I spend this week, last week, and you do a few months of that, and, and you kind of see, well, it turns out with, you know, engagements where you go meet people for coffee and talk about issues.
Okay, I'm going to jump in and try to bring this back. Can you bring this back around to your questions?
Well, I'm, yeah, I, I'm trying to understand how these decisions get made, and it sounds, and so I'm trying to understand where state law provides authority and guidance, and where we provide authority and guidance. And it sounds like, if I understood some of the answers to questions that I asked via Council President Forsythe, that the mayor's job is by state statute, full-time, correct? They have the controlling decision about, an elected mayor in our form of government is considered a full-time position.
In a strong mayor form of government, it is considered full-time since she has all purview over staff, so she essentially manages it full-time.
But again, it's a state, it's a state law or state ordinance that, that describes that. We don't describe it. We in the city don't have any flexibility on that. Is that correct?
I, I'm not sure, well, I'd have to ask Jim Haney that, because I couldn't quote yet the state statute for that.
Okay, that's fine. Those were the...
Well, I do have a response to your, for the Chief Operating Officer pay back in 2020, the maximum of the pay was $208,048, and again, the mayor's salary was $145,000 at that same time.
So that's gone from 208 to 248?
Correct, yes.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Stuart.
Thank you so much, Director Laird. So, and lastly, I missed it, this is actually the first time we've heard your recommendation. So you were reading this really lovely paragraph, and I was like, wait, where is that in the packet? So it took me a second to absorb it, and when I look at the packet, then, your recommendation is the band of EX-15, which at the top does have that, that maximum of $215,256. Our conversation, the last time council visited this, had us headed in the direction of something more market rate for mayors anyway, and the bottom of this EX-15 band is $153. So I, I do think, by way of just general direction at the moment, I wasn't able to give you a thumbs up or a thumbs down on the initial question because I was still absorbing the recommendation, but I do think by way of general direction, that band is, is beginning to, to go there for me. So that's what I have to say at the moment. Thanks.
Thank you. I will say, I actually had the same response of where, where is that recommendation? Is that recommendation in the packet? Because if it is, I did not see it.
It's not. It's, it's, I wanted to verbally give that to you.
Okay. And then we also received some information at 4:20 via email that I still haven't had the time to absorb, so I'm also not necessarily prepared fully to, to have a decision because we just received this information, so I hope we can have more conversation around it. Does anyone else have any questions? Councilmember Anderson?
You had a brief summary, and I can't, I apologize, I was listening, and I wasn't paying attention to who was saying this, so you listed the responsibilities of the role, and I was wondering if you could repeat those?
Absolutely.
And I have a follow-up question on that. I think it was you, Director Laird.
Okay. So the CEO, Chief Executive Officer, has hiring and firing authority, is accountable for strategic implementation of council legislation, and ensuring the efficient and successful operations of city services based on identified strategies, visions, and goals. There is a high degree of liability in decisions that must consider internal policy, external laws, and other compliance requirements.
Are you able to send that to us?
Yes, I am.
Could I ask a follow-up question?
Okay, so my questions on those three items, which I heard, higher fire responsibility accountable for ensuring legislation is carried forward and efficient and successful delivery of services. What of those three things or functions have been successfully delegated to professional staff in the city?
What of the three things? Or are you saying, are there three things in this list that have been delegated to staff?
Those, those three things, hiring fire responsibility, I assume is the final escalation for the mayor, whereas directors would have authority within their own department, is that correct?
The mayor does, for example, the mayor has delegated hiring to the directors, but the firing of any staff or the separation of any staff is at the mayor's authority.
Only?
Yes.
For real?
Only, only for real. That's right.
Okay. Thank you. We'd be happy to help you work on that. And then the next one is accountable for legislation that's enacted by council, is that correct?
Yeah, council, yep. And basically, what that means is that the mayor is responsible to make sure that whatever you put, that whatever your strategies are, whatever legislation is that you want enacted, she makes sure that that occurs.
Okay, how does council know that's the, that?
Well, I, I would, I don't know actually how you would actually physically know that, but I would assume that because she has that leadership role, that any leader who's been, who is responsible for making sure that whatever strategy has been identified is put into place. So the directors, we know what we're supposed to be doing from a strategy standpoint, the same thing would be for mayor.
So I guess that's the question, behind the question there is, has that been delegated to staff so that staff is reporting on those things that are council policy to the mayor?
I would not, well, I, I mean, the mayor expects staff to enact those legislations, so she is the one that's responsible to make sure it happens.
Right.
As any, as any high-level leader would be responsible for that.
Right. So I'm having trouble with, I'm not imagining a specific person in this role, but I'm imagining a person with absolutely no prior experience, rolling into the role of mayor with this level of authority, and that is a little bit frightening. So I'm just curious if there's, there's mechanisms in place for us, because we are also accountable to the public, for us to know that those responsibilities are being delivered effectively for this rate of, of pay that is being proposed.
So I would, I would want you to consider, then, why we have a COO, who, who is a full-time equivalent FTE employee, regular status, who would be in place whether, regardless of who the mayor is, and that person understands the operations of the organization, and so that person could help guide a new mayor, for example, through the processes of the organization. But it's ultimately the mayor who gives us the strategic direction, that expects us to enact what it is that the council wants to have happen. So you set whatever legislation you set for whatever those priorities are that you've identified, and then the mayor makes sure that those occur, and they, that filters down to the proper director to, to, and from a timing standpoint, prioritization and stuff, they make sure that that occurs. So it's a, it's a, it's a collaborative effort from, at a leadership level, from the mayor down to the COO, and then out to the directors.
So in a mayor-council form of government, my understanding was that the council is responsible as equal partners with the mayor, not necessarily, I'm not a big believer in a, quote, "strong" mayor system, since it's called mayor councils, so that's where I feel that there's a little bit of an unbalance between not only the compensation, but the the structure, and I think that's what I'm really trying to get at here. I'm not, I can't tell if we're talking about the ideal today, and what, or what is needed from the city right now, and it's a really difficult thing for me to understand, like, if we're splitting hairs or not. I think what you're proposing is probably reasonable. I have no justification from where I sit to argue with you about it, other than I can say that I'm pretty uncomfortable with the proposal, and I'd be happy to sort through why that is, so. And I also wanted to say thank you, I know I gave you a very long list of questions, and I appreciated all those responses, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson, did you have a chance to connect with Director Laird about the pay equity topic?
I did, and that is where the responses to those questions, I think, are the email that was received earlier today that you didn't have a chance to read yet.
Okay.
But would you like me to ask those questions?
If, if you would like to, so they're on the record, that'd be...
I have a tiny screen.
Okay.
My laptop is not charged today. You'll have to give me time and come back, you can also ask those questions.
Councilmember Fields.
Okay, so this is sort of simplistic, but I would appreciate an answer. Just on the information that you gave me earlier, Director, about what the COO salary was, and what the mayor's salary was, and what the COO salary is now, or the range, and what you're proposing or recommending, approximately, and, and I get it, these are just numbers, but I'm going to use the numbers as indications of something. The COO top range went, over those two years, up 20% from 208 to 240. If I did the same thing to the mayor's salary, it would roughly be $178,000, but you're proposing an additional $242,000. Just, just using those facts, as opposed to trying to normalize to other cities, or normalize to the director's salary, that implies a change in something. That implies, in my mind, it implies that, if you ignore that you're trying to even it out to some other external factor, the COO responsibilities and the value goes up 20%, why would the mayor go up, up in a much greater value than 20%?
Yeah, that's a really great question. The reason why we picked the recommendation that we picked, being at the max of the lower department director range, is because we looked, we looked at internal equity. So that's where, that was the first place that we went to. The salary at 145 for the mayor was below the director's by a significant amount, and so that's, that's the reason for the jump over the four years, so it goes beyond the COLA, which, yeah, which averages out to right around 13.6%. So it goes, goes beyond COLA, and it brings it more in line with internal equity.
So that was much more of a driver theoretically, based on your answer, than external comparisons to other cities? Which range in, wide a range?
Correct. We, we looked at the external data, of course, but felt that, given the workload of the mayor in comparison to the directors, and that she oversees the entire organization, that's why we went with the internal equity as our recommendation.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Carson.
Thank you. So I think we should use either "the" mayor or "they," because you're, you're saying she, obviously, we, we have, we have a female mayor right now, and, but that's not always going to be the case, and we're talking about the mayor's position, not...
Correct.
Not, not this particular mayor, so...
My apologies.
No, it's okay, I just wanted to make sure we understand that we're not talking about this mayor, and, because I think it, it gets correlated to potentially the performance of this mayor, which is not what we're talking about. We're talking about what we want to pay whoever the next mayor is. So the only thing I wanted to say about this, so there is actually code in the Revised Code of Washington that covers the duties and authority of the mayor, and it's, it's RCW 35A 12100, and it does specifically lay out what they are responsible for, basically, and also to run meetings and things like that, but I think the first part of the paragraph actually has much more of the day-to-day kind of operational things that you might want to look at, because it, it does specifically call out what a mayor shall be responsible for. So I think that, that's an important citation for everybody to, to have on board and, and be cognizant of, so that's all I had for this. I, I'm also pretty uncomfortable with that much of a jump, and, and I think we were, I mean, last time we were talking like in the 165 range, which I'm comfortable with, because I do think, part, part of Redmond has always been that the mayor, it's, it's part a love for the city that prompts them to run for mayor and serve as mayor, and it's not, it's not about, it's not a professional position. Obviously, they should act professionally, but it is, we're not hiring a mayor, we are electing a mayor, so, and there's a difference.
Thank you. And yes, pronouns, pronouns are a good thing to call out in this one, so I appreciate that part of the conversation. Councilmember Stuart.
I just wonder, Council President Forsythe, if maybe the question of, do we have the right band, is a worthy one at this point?
Sure. I think that's kind of where we're, where we're headed. I think, I do agree that last week, Mr. Carson's memory was correct, we were more toying around the 165 mark, so to hear the recommendation of 215 was also a bit, a bit of a newsflash to me as well. So do folks want to weigh in on where, where we feel about this band, or do we need to continue the conversation a little more to get some more depth of information? Councilmember Anderson?
I have the questions that you asked me about earlier, so I'm a little bit wrapped around the axle, and would you like first?
No problem. Let's, go ahead, and if you want to pull out a couple of the ones that you think were most pertinent, I see there's like 10 questions here.
Yes.
So if you want to call out a couple so that it helps inform the conversation we're having, that would be great.
Sure. I think the important piece on the salary side, there was also a conversation about the, the car stipend in the list of questions. For where I came out was, we're currently paying effectively $151. I think it's important that council is aware that the current area median income for the city of Redmond is $134,600, and that was data provided by Carol Helen, thank you, Director Helen, and Director Laird for collecting this information. I'm going to skip the transportation questions, and then the other question that I had asked was about, what is three times the current base salary of the lowest paid employee on payroll? As I recall, the last time we spoke with, I spoke about this issue, we were looking at a band, and so the information that came back, and I'll just read Director Laird's, if that, unless you would like to read it. It says, I said, "As of today, what is three times the current base salary of the lowest paid employee on payroll?" My understanding is that council sets one number for four years, not necessarily, for the mayor, but not necessarily for those positions, because we update those positions routinely, and that's easier for staff. So the lowest paid regular status employee in a nonrepresented position is currently 89K, and three times that is 267. The lowest regular stat, status represented employee is 826, and that, three times that is 247, and that's according to the payroll system, per Miss Laird. Did I get that right?
Yes, good job.
And I think that's the only two pieces that were really...
And those are the lowest paid full-time staff members.
Correct, yep.
Okay. Okay. So I think we should shift the conversation to the, the banding conversation, as Councilmember Stuart had mentioned. I know Mr. Carson has, has weighed in his, with his stance, if anyone else wants to weigh in on the minimum, midpoint, and maximum, and where we want to lead this conversation? Councilmember Fields.
So I think Councilmember Carson brings up an interesting point, and there are some other things in this discussion that sort of are aligned. They're, they're all sort, they're... They're all, they're creating a concept for me about what the mayor's position is. Now, if I'm hearing correctly, the mayor has responsibility for all these things, and we get that in this form of government. That's true. The mayor, because it's an elected position, because there's a lot of discretion, in the same way that the former mayor created the COO position, the mayor could create as many positions as they want in order to get those responsibilities done. In other words, the mayor could actually delegate theoretically everything, and do nothing, and say, hey, I hired people to do all that regional stuff, and I hired people to try to corral council, and work with them, and find out what the heck they're thinking, and whatever. Theoretically, an elected mayor could do that. So, that creates this, this other thing that Councilmember Carson brought up, in my mind, anyway, is what is, what does the mayor elected position actually represent and reflect? And it reflects a, not necessarily in a city manager form of government, it represents somebody who has leadership abilities, has the ability to care and love the city, and delegate responsibilities as necessary. But does that meet this criteria that we were just talking about, the three times the lowest salary? I don't know that that is a fair comparison, because the mayor does not necessarily work in the same way that a CEO of a corporation or a nonprofit, because they do, in fact, have a council, and they do, in fact, have, delegate all of these positions. So, I, because of all that, I'm not likely to support the range that has been recommended. I'm more in the 165 to 178 category.
Thank you. Any other conversation around this topic? Councilmember Anderson.
I thought Mr. Fields had a good comment about what, the proposal indicates something has changed about the rule, is a large increase in salary, and I don't know if we landed on something with that. Did we get that?
Mm-hmm.
Well, can somebody repeat the response for me? And then, I don't, okay, thanks.
I can. It was to sort of address an internal equity position, that the person with the CEO responsibilities who oversee all of the directors and the COO, that person is, from an equity perspective, paid a lot less than that group of people. So, there was a leap here to create an equity, an internal equity. But that was my, that was the answer that I heard.
Internal equity at the director level?
Correct.
Okay, that's a helpful clarification.
Do you have more, Ms. Anderson, or shall I move on?
Are we going to stay on this topic, or are we coming back to it? I think the pay band question was somewhere 153 to whatever the top line was, right? Was that the lowest?
Yes. 153, 756 to 215, 256.
I'm not sure I agree with pay banding in this situation. I don't think, I want to put on the table that council does have the authority not to change the salary. So, because I haven't heard a specific justification that would include changing the mayor from an elected comparable to a director level comparable, getting into a band, it seems a little bit irrelevant to me. So, and the council's responsibility here, to me, seems like setting a number for four years, so...
Thank you. Councilmember Carson.
This is actually to talk about Mr. Fields' point, that, and it's true that the mayor could hire, or could employ people to do the duties that the mayor typically would do, but the council has the authority to actually approve or not approve those positions. So, the council did approve a COO position, and the explanation at the time was, you know, along the same lines of what we talked about already, where the day-to-day oversight of departments, and, you know, working with directors, and then the mayor being the strategic side of the House. So, but we would still have the final vote on whether or not we allowed those positions to be created in the first place, through the budget process.
I agree. Thank you.
So, anyway, that's all I had.
Thank you. I guess I'll weigh in with what I'm, oh, go ahead.
No, I was just going, go ahead. I was just going to offer some other options, if the pay banding options don't seem relevant.
Well, I guess, I guess I'm intrigued by that conversation, because to Ms. Anderson's point, tying the banding to an elected position, that's tying it to a full-time director's position, is a bit of an interesting point, in that if that's the metric, then I would see the same metric being applied to us as well, which is very clearly not what's happening. So, I'm kind of noodling on this as we speak about it in the moment, so if you'd like to go ahead and give us some alternatives, that would be helpful, I think.
Sure. There's a couple of ways, different ways that I think you can think about this, and Catherine and I sat down to look at other options. So, I think you received the information of comparable cities, and kind of what mayors in our form of government were being paid. So, if you look at the comparable cities and the median of those cities, it's about 172,000 compared to, you know, all other mayors that have the same form of government that we do. Also, kind of option number three, if you look at, since the mayor's salary is static for at least four years, if you look at the CPIW increase, which was, Catherine noted, was a little over 13%, if we put the cumulative CPI on the $145,000 that the mayor is being paid now, that comes out to about 165.5. So, those are two other options that you can consider.
Can you provide those to us as well in writing? Thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
With apologies in advance, if this is a little bit beyond the level of the current conversation, I wanted to simplify two questions that I think paying a mayor answers. And one is, do we have one? And the second one is, are they paid? So, really, what we're talking about is paying, it's like insurance, and it's the same question that council satisfies in terms of a governance structure. So, it's like, how much do you think your insurance rates have increased in the last four years for the luxury of having a paid mayor? And I don't see really a whole lot more than that. I think I'm particularly uncomfortable with the fact that the mayor is a representative of the city, and is currently already making more than the AMI, which is the average for most folks here. And I think that may be a longer-term indicator to kind of track, as opposed to neighboring cities. I understand this is a little bit more conceptual than it really needs to be. Ultimately, I was not, I was kind of expecting to see the 145 adjusted for inflation over the past four years, is kind of where I'm at, so...
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. I have a couple of comments on the most recent part of the conversation. Last time we had this conversation, we actually rolled comparisons to council kind of out of scope of the question, just to keep the two processes really separated, but it appears they're back on, so I have a couple of comments if we're going to have that conversation. One key difference for me between the council role and the mayor role is that, as part-time council members, we do have the option to go out and earn income another way. The role of the mayor is a 24/7, 365 job, with very, near impossible to earn income another way. So, I agree with the last point, Councilmember Anderson, that CPIW, it plays a role here, more so than, you know, changes in the insurance industry. I think CPIW is where we started this conversation with the comparables. But just if we're going to compare elected roles, this is a more than full-time job that the mayor takes on, so, thanks.
Thank you. I think, for me, I was also expecting more of that base percentage increase, and I have in my notes a 3.8, a 7%, and a 9%, and a 9% increase takes us to 158.50, plus the 6K for the car, so, you know, 162-ish, 3-ish. Sorry, I'm not mathing very easily right now, but I think that's where my comfort level was for this part of the conversation as well. I do, I am getting some consensus around that 160-ish number, 165 number. Please weigh in if you're feeling otherwise. Councilmember Fields.
So, I think there's been some really important discussion, and I appreciate Councilmember Stewart pointing out the nature of the role being full-time versus part-time. I think that's important for us to remember. The one thing we haven't talked about is value to the city. Value, we should be thinking in terms of creating value all of the time. And part of that is, what would attract the best candidates for the position? Who would run for this position if they have to work full-time, put up with seven part-time council members, and only get paid, you know, something? So, I think we have to think in terms of what is the right for the people who do, in fact, elect us, and do, in fact, elect the mayor. What is, what do they need? What do they deserve? And they deserve a strong leadership, if we're going to stay in this form of government, and there has to be a certain amount of pay for that position. And also, there's the other side of that value, is you shouldn't overpay, simply because, for whatever reason. I mean, I can think of 100 reasons, I'm not going to mention them, but we have to be careful in that we find that position, sort of, value or price that position, is the best way I can put it, that attracts the right people, but also respects and provides that regard that this position is an elected position, not necessarily a city manager professional level, and in does, is supported by a COO that does earn somewhere in the $200,000 category. So, I just wanted that to be on the table. With all of that said, I'm still at that 175, 178 sort of range.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
I had some additional thoughts to kind of wrap my head around this idea of a pay band. I think the back end of that in the proposal comes from good intentions, and I wanted to recognize that. I think it was about three times as much as we talked about last time, so thank you. However, one thing I'd like to point out, with using banding, when you're comparing positions between electeds and professional staff, the assumption is that they're working all the time, and we don't have a way to keep track of that, so that, but also that the jobs are really fundamentally different, and it's not a competition with the professional staff. Whereas, it is kind of a competition, at least it's a popularity contest of some kind on the elected level. So, I think that there's definitely some different dynamics to consider when we're setting what we would consider to be a reasonable salary for an elected mayor. I guess that's all I really had to say on that one, so...
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart.
I wanted to applaud you, Council President Forsyth, because I really liked the approach that you took in the last round. I think it's very likely that we may not agree on a rationale toward whatever the ultimate answer is, but beginning to circle the drain, as it were, on the answer. I really appreciate this approach, so I'm here for it. You said 175, I'll take it. You can put me on the record for that, I just did, but yeah, I think eventually, we're going to have to wrap the conversation, so...
Councilmember Carson.
And I think I would be, so I've been around the 165 mark. I think one's, considering that we don't update it, it doesn't get indexed to go up, I think maybe, I certainly could support 170. I think that's a, it's a pretty healthy increase over the current salary. I think it keeps the, as Councilmember Anderson put it, the professionals interested in that, or maybe it was Mr. Fields, I forget. One of you were talking about, you want a certain level of qualification. So, okay, it was Mr. Fields. But, so that's, I think that's where I'm coming down, is somewhere in that 170 ballpark.
Is that inclusive of the car stipend? I know, we haven't talked, we haven't...
We haven't talked about the car.
Yeah, so you're just talking...
So, that's just salary.
Base salary.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. I'm still wrapping my head around it, because there's a lot of information we haven't been able to review yet. Anyone else? Councilmember Anderson.
What was your number again? 158.50?
My number was 158, that's a 9% increase. I do appreciate Councilmember Carson's insight into the, only every four years, but we also have not talked about the, and we haven't talked about recently in our FAC meetings, the potential of an impending, of a looming recession. So, I'm trying to juggle all of that. I think I could be comfortable in the 165, 170 range, perhaps, but I'm still toying. Yeah, go ahead.
I would love to have the same conversation every two years.
Right.
Seems like it fits budget cycles a little bit better. I'm more on the lines of whatever the COLA was from, in terms of rates of inflation, to apply to the current base salary.
Director Laird, what was the COLA for the last?
For, I'm sorry, the COLA for '23? Oh, yes, I have those.
Whatever the cumulative was.
Sure. Okay, so '21, the COLA was 2.06%, '22, it was 5.29%, and '23, it was 6.25%. And that equals 13.6%. I did email that to you, so you do have access to that as well, because I know those numbers can get a little bit lost. But the mayor's salary had started out on January 1st of 2020, so there was no COLA applied to it in 2020, so we start the COLA in '21.
What is the top line number that comes out of that math?
The top line number comes out to 165,555.
Sold.
I like it. Councilmember Stewart.
We did not, it didn't come up as much in this conversation, but the last time, we kind of were talking about how frequently should it be done. I agree with you, Councilmember Anderson, it fits in line with the budget cycle. I think I've said that before. I did, however, it happened to be in a training recently, where I learned about some other positions in local government that have high ethical standards, and their salaries are only set every four years. So, it does make sense to me, it's by term. It should be back in the budget cycle, prior to the one leading into the new term, I think, but just, I did learn about this consistency with other elected, or other positions where we have really high ethical standards, and I thought that was you, important correlation with this conversation.
That's all. Thank you. Councilmember Fields.
Not to nitpick your math, Director, but what, did you add those three numbers, or did you multiply them, 1.021 times the next one, times the next one?
I did it, yes.
Great, thank you.
And that's just the base, that's not inclusive of the car allowance?
Correct.
The 165.5, okay. Thank you. Shall we move on to the car conversation? Councilmember Carson.
Have we come to a consensus? Because I don't know that I've heard four say a particular number, and there's only five of us, so it's going to have to be...
That is true.
It's going to be interesting to get to four. You know, I just think, you know, if you look at the COLAs, I think that's an important factor to take in. Obviously, there was a year where there wasn't a COLA, right? The first... The first, well, I guess, I guess it was set at 145, and then you had three years that, because we're only at that third year, so.
Correct.
Right, so, so, you know, I think 170 is a nice round number that it can be pointed to, like, everybody knows, I mean, it's all public information anyway, but it's very clear what it is. If someone is interested in running for mayor, then they know what they're in for, and it's that, that way for, I like that it's there for four years. They, you know, you're signing on for four years, so I think it's completely, in a way, I kind of like the idea of it being part of the budget conversation. But, you know, when you set it for four years, you know that's what it's going to be, that's what the person who is elected as mayor knows, that's what they're getting, and that's it. And, you know, and then in four, at the end of that fourth year, we look at what it's going to be for the next four years, so, as councilmembers.
Thank you.
So anyway, that's, I think that's, it's a good number because it's indexed about where the COLAs would end up, given that we don't have a fourth year to be able to kind of figure in there, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson, did I see your hand?
Can we put in the ordinance and intent to adjust for COLA at a future date?
I'm sorry, to adjust it by COLA?
Yeah.
So yes, we can do that certainly. It would just be a choice, do you want to do that every year, or if you want to go the four years and adjust it, you know, for those four years at once, so.
I would suggest that year two, because sound, I think I understand what Mr. Carson's saying, is that we're only thinking about three years of COLA. My other suggestion would be looking at maybe a projected COLA for this year, or a standard rate of inflation of 3%, something like that.
Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, I concur with what Councilmember Anderson just said. I also think, and maybe somebody has a better memory than me, I think we tried to do that the last time. We tried to pick a number that reflected a midterm COLA amount. So I think that that's a legitimate thing to do. So I think I'm, you know, I had proposed high-end 178, I'm good with 170. If there's a way to look, I'm not sure what it means intent, or that we would actually adjust it midterm for COLA for the first two years. But I think 170 plus an adjustment for COLA after two years is a good, I'm good with that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Still weighing my options over here. Councilmember Stuart, do you have anything?
I'm comfortable with 170. If we took that 165 from the 13% COLA, and then we added the projected 3%, we would be at like 169,9999 basically, anyway. So 170 is feeling comfortable for me. Thanks.
Okay. I think we have consensus around 170. Is that what I'm hearing? Yes, yes, yes. Okay, great. And next, we will move to the car allowance part of the discussion. This is on top of the 170. Director Laird, did you want to run us through your proposals?
Yes, I would like that. So just a quick reminder, the current car allowance is $500 per month, added to the base pay and is taxable income, but is not subject to the Department of Retirement System, or PERS, and MEBT deductions. So that question did come up, so I just wanted to clarify that. So we also have a recommendation for the car allowance, and our recommendation is to retain the car allowance instead of providing the mayor with a city car or reimbursement for public transportation, or instead of reimbursement for the miles driven. We recommend the car allowance to be increased to $600 a month from $500, and this increase would cover increased gas and insurance costs, mileage-driven and general maintenance, tolls, parking, and would allow for more efficiency of the mayor's time spent traveling to and from city-related business meetings, events, and such. Plus, it would also require less or no staff time really in tracking and reimbursing travel expenses. One of the questions that Council Anderson had asked about was some of those questions on reimbursements, and you also had asked those questions. So in the materials I gave you, I do have a handout on, specifically on how all of those reimbursements work. But it is quite, it's a logistical task that would have to be done both by the mayor and by staff. So if you just do a straight car allowance, the mayor uses her own car, she pays for her own gas, she pays for her own insurance and such, and so all of those factors aren't taken into consideration or need to be tracked. We do know, in talking to the mayor, in this particular case, in this mayor, when possible, the mayor will use the ORCA card to go to meetings that can be, that she can get to through public transportation. Hand it over to Melissa.
So the first option is the $600, as Director Laird said, which would be a $100 increase from the 500 that the mayor receives right now. There's also the option of a city car, so the mayor could drive a city car, which means the city is, you know, essentially pays for gas and the insurance and everything. And according to Director Burt, who handles the fleet, that is about $864 a month to provide a city car to the mayor. And then the other alternative, as Director Laird said, would be just doing the administration of continually reimbursing the mayor for whatever she uses.
Thank you. Councilmember Carson?
So I don't love that last option at all, because it is logistically problematic.
It is administratively burdensome.
Yeah, and also, we may end up paying more than the 500, and all the staff time that we burn certainly is, is going to add up to more than, added on to whatever expenses are submitted. It's going to be more than that, so I don't love that. I actually think we should keep it exactly the same at 500, and it's a nice round number. It is, you know, you know what you're getting, and I don't, I think right now we're seeing gas prices go up, but, you know, I mean, with hybrids and electric vehicles, those costs are going to be all over the place, so it just doesn't, to me, I don't think that it bears being increased at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields?
I just bought an electric car. They're really expensive, by the way, so.
It's your choice.
Correct. But I think just because they're electric doesn't mean that the cost per mile is actually going down.
True.
Roughly, how many miles over the past eight years or six years? What, I mean, roughly, like ballpark, what does the mayor drive on behalf of the city?
So in looking at, and I did need to look specifically at Mayor Bernie, she drives on average 225 miles per month. So we could figure that out. I didn't bring my calculator, but anyway.
So, yeah.
And mileage reimbursement is .655 cents per mile.
Right, right. I'm okay with the increase of $100 per month. I'm not, I'm not doing much thought on the merit of the foundation of 500, but an increase of 100, given what I know about transportation and driving a car, seems reasonable to me. So I'm good with the 600 if the council is in that ballpark of 500, 600. I'm not going to object to that.
Thank you. Councilmember Stuart?
I'm also in favor of the 600, that's fine. I can't find it at the moment, but I do know that Director Laird already sent us the math on the mileage, given what the current mayor does drive, so we did, it's in here somewhere, and we did get to see that. But I'm fine with the 600 as well, just rising costs, inflation, this is just an adjustment to that, as with everything.
Thank you. I will share, I'm actually in agreement with Mr. Carson on this one. I think the 500 is, it's not necessarily something that we have to cover a car allowance. It was relatively new in the scheme of the mayoral pay, and, I mean, we, all of our city staff is expected to drive to their jobs, and this seems like a perk, and the $500 in my mind covers that. $6,000 of car maintenance a year is, it's about right, and the 200 and some odd miles that you'd mentioned in a month is a tank of gas, in my mind, so. Ms. Anderson?
I'm in favor of a city car, and one reason is that it does not, it means city business is city business. So when the mayor's traveling on city business, then she's representing the city.
Ooh, interesting, we have a split decision here. Councilmember Stuart?
I'm happy to just change my position to keeping it at 500 if it keeps the majority moving forward on the decision.
All right, thank you.
Just a question on the city car. I know that Director Burt mentioned 865 or whatever it was. Does that mean that that city car is provided to the mayor full-time as a vehicle that can be used for both city and non-city transportation?
City vehicles can't be used for non-city transportation.
Cannot be.
Cannot. So it would be for city business specifically.
And 865 is a dedicated car or a shared car? That seems like a lot.
It's a dedicated car, and the reason why it seems a little high is because for every one of our vehicles, we put in an additional rate to replace it when it needs to be replaced. So it's not only insurance and gas and that sort of thing.
Depreciation.
But it has this replacement cost.
Got it.
Councilmember Carson?
I think there's a logistical problem for mayors in, and I think certainly our mayor, I think, would concur with this if she were here to answer the question, about it not being, I think one of the logistical issues is that the mayor sometimes will go directly to events first thing, you know, not come to City Hall first, and so that would be an additional potential burden to just have to drive here just to get the car so that she can do city business. And I do think, you know, the costs, I think, are obviously higher. Also, I think there's a certain amount of comfortableness with your own car that you wouldn't have with even a dedicated vehicle that the city owns. So I think, I think any mayor would prefer to have their own vehicle if, and I think that logistically, it makes sense from a gas usage perspective, from a convenience perspective, from not spending more than we have to perspective. So that's why I don't support that.
Thank you. I recall in the last conversation, someone mentioned a credit card for gas purchases. Was that weighed into this, these options?
So are you talking about a gas card?
Correct.
Okay. It would be if we were on that system. We're not quite on that system yet.
Okay.
So, but a gas card would be an option.
And the mayor would also be able to gas at the MOC, to be able to get fuel at the MOC.
Is that?
It's not required, but that would be available as well.
Is that not currently available?
It is available.
It is available?
Yes.
So currently, the mayor could get gas at the MOC within the current scope?
Not with, not for her own car, that.
Okay.
Fuel is only for cities.
Thank you.
City car, yeah.
Got me really confused there for a second. Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
I appreciate that there's a conversation around the idea of a city car for city business, and the concern I have just articulated is that, there's the phrase, "we're always campaigning", and I would not like to see a mix of city business with campaign business, and I think that would be cleaner if it was, if we are in fact trying to satisfy some preference or provide perks for this job that we're talking about at this point. I'm not exactly sure why we're catering to the fact of providing a car in the first place, but if there is a need for a city business, I think it's reasonable for what would be the top employee of the city to take a city vehicle.
Thank you. Councilmember Stuart?
I understand Councilmember Anderson's point, and I also appreciate the inclusion that a car allowance allows over a city vehicle for anyone who is a parent or a caretaker, because, you know, daycare pickups or school drop-off, none of that could happen in a city vehicle. And so if we chose the city vehicle route, it does make it more difficult for any, like, reduces the talent pool from which our city can look for a new mayor when election season comes around. So I understand the concern on the always campaigning, but there are other life factors that I think the reimbursement system actually makes it more inclusive.
Thank you. Yeah, I fully appreciate the sentiment of the city vehicle and being strictly for city business. I'm, the part I'm uncomfortable with the city vehicle is the overall cost, and I see the $500 stipend as being more cost-effective. And I would hope that, and this may not always be true, but I would hope that city business is being done on city time and not campaign business on city time. But the $954 a month that we have here in our, in our car expense options is just out of the scope that I'm interested in entertaining. Councilmember Fields?
Have we thought about, in the same way the IRS has you do a log, when you have a car that you use for both business and personal? And in order to get that tax deduction, I have to keep track of every mile that I actually go to umpire a baseball game, for example. So have we thought about that, reimbursing based on mileage?
Yes, and that is an option based on mileage. The thing about reimbursement is it's, you know, a monthly or weekly reimbursement, and it is, it does become burdensome on staff to continually reimburse like that, but certainly it is an option.
I thought that the burden was more if we try to reimburse on expenses as opposed to on a per-mile basis. I mean, there shouldn't be a whole lot of burden on staff if you're just tracking your miles that are related to city business and turning that in once a month, as opposed to repairs and oil changes and whatever.
Exactly, yeah. So certainly, somebody can keep track of their mileage. I think, you know, a lot of people do that when it comes to taxes. It's kind of the wear and tear on that vehicle, and reimbursing the fuel, and so, you know, the receipt system and that sort of thing.
But isn't that why we have the 60 cents per mile? Because 60 cents per mile includes wear and tear and all of those things. It's not just for gas.
It's not just for gas, but you would have to look at the, because there's a specific, I'm going to say basket of goods that that 65.5 cents gives you, and it's not everything for a car. It's meant to reimburse you for short trips, you know, like I go to, you know, Mercer Island or something, and, you know, those short trips, not using your car continually for business.
Okay, I'm just going to press it one step further, because I'm really trying to explore this distinction that Councilmember Anderson actually very articulately described. this distinction that Councilmember Anderson actually very articulately described as an issue. And I think Councilmember Forsyth as well. We could actually establish our own rate for this car program. We could say a dollar a mile and reimburse based on that. We could do that, correct? I'm not suggesting that. I'm just trying to be clear.
Yes, I believe that you have, yeah, I believe that you can do that.
So if we did that, and that rate, whatever we came up with, accommodated all of those potential wear and tear, and et cetera, et cetera, then we would only be reimbursing based on city business, whether that's 250 miles or 280 miles, correct?
Yeah, whatever that comes out to be.
Okay, just checking. Thanks.
Councilmember Anderson?
I think Mr. Fields brought up a good point here. And I think it had also been a Miss Forsyth. So it is the, and Ms. Fields, you may have said this too, I apologize. I have trouble keeping track of this conversation. So the, it is the employee's responsibility to declare any sort of reimbursement request. And I don't want to lose track of that. So why are we providing an allowance for it? I don't quite understand it. If it is a city business, we should be reimbursing the person. And if they fail to claim a reimbursement, then that's on them, and they can do that. Ultimately, I don't like the idea of a car allowance, so I'm at zero. If the closest that we get is 500, fine. But at the same time, you know, I think that it becomes clearly splitting hairs, trying to decide what the rate should be. We're making it way complicated. So ultimately, I can't personally justify a car allowance. I don't think employees should be using their own cars for work. And I see that there is a power dynamic between a accounting person, employee, potentially approving a mayor's reimbursement. So what we would ultimately be looking at is approving the mayor's mileage expenses every year on a council consent agenda, or every month, if that's what that system looks like. So I don't, I think that overcomplicates it. If we need to raise the base salary, I'm pretty much at zero. So I would like to see the allowance go away. Thanks.
Councilmember Stewart? That's okay. I'm still formulating.
Okay. I would like to share a little bit about my own lived experience and an offer that we actually probably do come out ahead if we settle on the 500. I manage a staff that serves a countywide organization, and it is the bane of my existence, every two weeks, to make them sit down for 20 to 30 minutes to map out all their mileage and get it. If we had an executive who is traveling all the time for a 24/7 job, that had to have either themselves or their executive assistant tracking this, we actually lose out on the staff time it costs to manage and shuffle all that paperwork all the time. I think, I think in the end, it probably comes pretty close to 500, or we're saving by just going with a flat rate of 500. Because time is money. That's my perspective.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So 225 miles is just a little bit more than driving three hours to Portland. Just for concept, is that it's not a whole lot of time in the car. It's not full-time driving. And I just, you know, ultimately, even $500 for that, it seems a little bit over the cost.
Thank you. I think I'm starting to formulate my thoughts and feels around this. I'm with you, Councilmember Anderson, on the, I'm not a big fan of the car allowance, but I do appreciate that that money cannot go towards getting a match, say, in the MEPT program, that it is separate from that, so that it is separate from that base salary in that way. I'm also not a fan of it being separate in the fact that it, then we, we look like we're only paying the mayor one number, and yet actually, there's more in it than that. So I'm very torn on these two different numbers and what it actually means in the long term for the salary rate. So I'm also, I'm still torn as to whether or not I just want to keep it at that 500, or just raise that base salary. But I really appreciate the conversation, and if everyone is open to continuing, and I see Councilmember Fields getting ready for comment.
No, I don't have a comment. But when you said you were beginning to form your opinions, is that what you meant?
I'm circling the drain on my opinions. I have many opinions bouncing around up here.
I can't wait to hear them.
Councilmember Stewart?
Well, we don't have a full team tonight, so that could be playing into it. I guess it just, my preference would be not to revisit the decision we did get consensus on, with that 170, and to keep this decision isolated. And if we can come to a placeholder tonight, that might be helpful to the other teammates coming into the conversation, or the potential that, that is kind of how my mind works on it.
Councilmember Carson, did you have anything? You look like you might.
Well, so I would draw a distinction between an employee and a mayor who's elected in terms of, I mean, I don't want to see any mayor of any city having to deal with submitting mileage and just the minutia of that. It's, it's simply not worth it. Their time is better spent doing other things, if they're good. And I just, I think logistically, a city car is a problem. It's more expensive. It's not what, it's frankly, not what probably any mayor would want. They would probably prefer to just make it super simple. It's part of their compensation, kind of. It doesn't count toward their retirement. Okay, fine. It's really designed to try to approximate the cost of their transportation as they go around the community and to other communities where they have to travel for representing the city. So I just want it super simple, not, don't overthink it, just, you know, really, and no, don't complicate not just the mayor's life, whoever the mayor is, but the staff that have to do all that work. And it's just, to me, it's just not worth it.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields?
Carson's right. No, I mean, I think, I'm good with the 500. The reality is that the mayor is not walking to all these events. And they are not bicycling to all these events. There is a need for an automobile to help with the transportation of doing that job. There's no question. We know that. So then it's just a matter of what is the right amount? I'm not gonna, you know, 225 miles one month, 225 miles next month. That, I, we should simplify this. And I think that, as much as I appreciate all of the discussion and the need to, to be consistent with other employees, et cetera, this is a special employee position, and we shouldn't make it too complex. And we want the mayor, whoever that mayor is, to support the city by going out and going to events, going to regional events, going and meeting with constituents, having breakfast, doing whatever. We want that person to do that. They need an automobile to do it, $500.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
So if the, if a employee or the mayor is on city business in their own vehicle, whose insurance covers them?
Their insurance.
Their insurance covers them. Thank you.
I think I'm still at that spot of the $500. Not interested in the 600. The 500 also, then, I think, would, us keeping it at that rate, in my opinion, would encourage the use of public transportation when available. It is right in between those two numbers of the 600 that was proposed and the 300 that the Orca Card alternative option provides. So I can be good with the 500. That is four. That is four. We do not have two councilmembers here tonight, not providing their input and their opinions. So I know we have given you all the information you have asked for, but in regards to the fact that we have, we have two councilmembers missing, and we have a lot of information that I have not personally been able to fully vet because of when we received it, I'm interested if folks are okay with the 516 for consent, or if there's more time that's needed to let this information sink in, or consider with the folks that are not here. Councilmember Anderson, did you have a thought?
Can we repeat what we got to?
So from my scribbles, we have agreed to a base salary of 170 and a car allowance of $500 a month. Is that, was that what you have as well?
An effective date of January 1.
An effective date of January 1. We did not circle back on the COLA conversation.
That's what I was gonna ask, if I could clarify. Because I wrote down midterm COLA. I just want to clarify whether that's in or out.
Midterm COLA? In, in?
How much?
Good question.
Because that's...
I know this one. It would be based on CPIW for the first half.
Or we can set it.
Or we could just set it.
So close.
You could make it 5,000 and be done with it. It's a lot easier than having to calculate it. And then you know, then when someone asks you, what does the mayor make? 175 in two years.
So just to be clear, in two years, meaning effective?
26.
January 1, 2026, the salary goes from 170 to 175.
Sure.
I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that.
That's what, that's what I'd like to see.
Okay.
And then it's super simple to tell a constituent, oh yeah, the mayor makes one, you know, whatever, 170, 175.
Plus the 6,000 on top of that for the car allowance.
Yeah. Well, that, they don't make that. That's, that's in order to get them around. So.
Still struggling with that one on myself.
You shouldn't struggle with that, I don't think. I mean, you can reflect on your own experiences. Any of us could reflect on our own experiences. We know that transportation does not come at zero cost.
True.
When you're doing something for your business, you know, it costs you. And the mayor is doing, incurring costs on behalf of the city. And we're just saying, as Councilmember Carson put it clearly, we don't want to overcomplicate this. We know that there is some value, and we have to choose a value. And that's, whether it's 500, or 600, or 300, but I think we've arrived at 500. But we know that. We know for certain that there is a cost to whoever holds that position. And they shouldn't have to bear that burden without reimbursement.
Sure. My struggle is more in the fact that they are already getting a well-compensated salary. So.
That was a separate discussion.
Can someone do the math real quick and let me know what the percentage of the 5,000 would be of the 175? I'm not a math person. Over the two, I guess it's the...
You're, you're talking about January 1 of 2026? Is that right?
Yeah. So the proposal, the proposal on the floor is that after two years, it's an increase of $5,000. So what is that percentage? Councilmember Anderson, did you math?
Oh, I don't have the math in my head. Sorry. Not that good. The, I think I understand what's the hesitation, maybe that we don't know the future in two years, and it could be a recession, and we may not want to add salary. I also agree with Ms. Stewart's. If we are consistently using CPIW from June, I think that's an easy number, whatever that is. It's just a little bit uncertain, because we don't predict the future here. No crystal ball. I would say that if we could get an ordinance with an option, that would be helpful.
An option for CPIW?
Yeah. So basically, come back to council conditionally. And if the environment or the economy is good, and then it's okay to ask, and we would approve it up to 5,000 or a CPIW, something like that.
I could, I can get on board with that.
You may want to consider, if you want to do CPIW, you could do a floor, basically, and a ceiling. So 2% floor, for example, and a 5% ceiling. So you know the percent increase will never be any less than 2% or more than 5%. And so that kind of helps cover some of those variations that occur with the inflation.
Or we could set it to the past three-year average, or something like that, four-year average?
Well, we could. Yeah, we could do that. Yeah, we could.
Historically versus future forward? What would the rest of the city do?
What does the rest of the city do? We generally, most of the union contracts do the CPIW first half with the floor and ceiling. If you do the average from the past three years, you know, if the, if the economy goes down, then you're going to be pretty high. And you're still going to have to, you know, give an increase. So generally speaking, following CPIW is a really good indicator of what's occurred in the last year for inflation. So that's a, that's a good one to follow. Another option would be to do 3%, just a flat rate, 3%.
I'm in favor of 3%.
Thank you. Councilmember Carson?
So 170 to 175 is almost exactly 3%. It's 1.029.
Great.
Or 029.
Thank you.
2.9%.
My gut going into this conversation was 3%. So I appreciate that. Thank you for doing that math. Councilmember Stewart?
I'm in favor of setting it. And setting it at 3% is absolutely fine. And then not spending any more time on $5,000, which is so little, and compared to the overall, you know, we're spending $5,000, you know, probably here in staff time on this decision over the couple of nights. So I'm in favor of setting it at 3. That's great.
All right. I feel like that is 3, 4 in favor of 3%, 5 in favor of 3% of the two-year mark.
Okay, so the two-year mark, so January 1 of 2026, add an additional $5,000 to make the base salary 175.
3%.
Oh, you just want to do 3%?
Well...
But in the ordinance, we're marking it 3%.
But you can just say 170, because that is 3%. I mean, it's 2.94. So, but it's a round number. See, I like to be able to just say...
So my thinking is, if the oncoming council then decides not to do anything, then we still have it at that 3%. So then that would be 3% of the 175 that it moves to in 2026.
But that's only, that would only be good through, do we have a sunset on it?
We could, we technically could decide to do nothing right now, and keep it at the same as it was. So in four years, the next council could do the same thing, which would then keep it at 3% instead of $5,000, which would be more in the long run.
So what you're saying is a 3% unless council acts?
Correct.
Per year, in perpetuity?
Unless we want a sunset.
Per year or in year two?
It's in year two, yeah.
And the way I think I'm hearing you say it is there would be nothing beyond 26. So it'd be only 26. You'd have the 3% increase, unless you specified what you, what you wanted to do for 27, for 2027.
Right, it's only every two years.
Every two years, yeah. Yeah, I guess I just, I just like to be able to know exactly what the mayor makes. And if it's going to go up by 3%, then at some point, I'm not going to be able to just rattle that number off.
It'll be real close, though.
It will be. It'll be slightly over that, but...
I think, I think I saw Councilmember Anderson next. No? Yes? Okay. Councilmember Stewart?
I have a question. Does saying it goes up by 3% every two years with that cost-of-living adjustment make the process easier to our future selves?
Slightly, yes.
Because we've done a lot of adjustment in this conversation, a lot of catch-up. And the part that's been awkward is the process. And so if it's a gift to our future selves, I'm in... And so if it's a gift to our future selves, I'm in favor of that.
Thank you. Councilmember Carson?
But I don't think that it is a gift to our future selves, because it's every two years. It's simply not keeping up with inflation if it happens to be 3% each year. Because that's obviously half of what it should be going up. It would be compounded 3% next year, 3% the next year. So I don't know. I don't think it is a gift. It says where 3% every two years gets you, but it doesn't necessarily keep up with what either the market rate for a mayor is in our formal government, or even a professional manager. It obviously is not keeping up with that, so it's not intended to, but that's... So again, I think a future council would have to take it up because it isn't keeping up with inflation even, potentially, so.
Yeah, I think it at least gets us more in line, because it's not every four years then. Councilmember Anderson?
To frame the question that I'm thinking about, in councils' minds, two years from now, of which we are not necessarily the two years away from the state council, what are the criteria that we would consider at that time to increase the salary? And my question, I specify that because those conditions can be placed in the ordinance now. So what I kind of am picking up, and you can all correct me if I'm incorrect about this, but it sounds like we would be willing to reconsider in two years, an increase in the salary, subject to certain conditions, but I can't put my finger on exactly what those are. And then the amount is what we've been discussing, but the amount is irrelevant if the conditions aren't met. So can you help?
Yeah, I think for me, the conditions are the state of the economy like you had first mentioned. So when you had mentioned the floor and the ceiling, I think that is a much more interesting idea to me. But then I thought we all landed on the 3%, so kind of went with that. Open to the floor and the ceiling based on the economic conditions. Councilmember Anderson?
I'd set the floor at zero.
Interesting. Councilmember Fields?
I think I got lost. I thought we were making a decision to actually build into the ordinance an automatic increase of 5,000 or 3%, no matter what. So it sounds like we're saying that in two years, we might give, we might increase it. That's not what I thought we were voting on. I thought we were voting on a very specific salary effective January 1, 2024, of 170,000. That would then be adjusted two years later to 175,000. And now I'm hearing that we're voting on 170,000 with an option, maybe, maybe not. Which, why would we do that?
I've heard both conversations as we've been talking tonight.
I thought we had an agreement. Maybe we didn't. I got excited when...
You got excited?
So I...
So I guess we're temperature checking. Which do you prefer? Do you prefer...
Well, I don't think that there's any doubt in this. I think that we should stick with the four years, 170,000, and add the 5,000 in 2026. There is no doubt, nobody in this room should have any doubt, that inflation is going to be less than that. It's going to be that or more, I'm certain. So we're just trying to provide, again, that value to that position and recognize that we're in that sort of dynamic situation where either that or don't do it at all. But, you know, stick with the 170, wait four years and decide then. But the option idea is not, in my mind, not a good one.
So you prefer 170 plus $600 a month car allowance?
500.
500, sorry. Didn't want to open that can of worms again. $500 a month car allowance in 2024 with a $5,000 increase in 2026 to the base salary.
Correct.
Thank you.
Say it again?
Second, from Mr. Carson, Councilmember Stewart?
I can be on board with that, and I don't mean to be like a pushover when I keep saying like, yep, I can do that, yep, I can do that. I just really feel like the number of dollars we're actually talking about compared to the overall size of the budget, like, yep, that ballpark sounds great. Happy with that. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm on board with that as well.
Great. So for a salary increase, January 1 of '26 to 175,000?
Yes, that is what I'm hearing.
And so, and then that would be the only increase, right? So no increase in '28, because it would sound like that's when the salary will be reviewed again?
Correct.
Okay, great.
Technically in '27, though.
Well, yeah, but effective 11, '28, yeah.
Councilmember Anderson, did you have more?
The other question, I guess, on the date effective, we've answered the question of when it's effective. But what I would really like to see is when it needs to be reviewed by, as specified in the ordinance. And the reasoning for that is partly because it's not really timed well with the budget, and also kind of coming into this kind of showcase of, hey, we're coming into an election season. So it would be nicer and perhaps a little less contentious if it was earlier.
I would agree that I think it should be closer to the budget conversation. See consensus on that?
Yes, please. Let's just do it as part of the budget process and...
We're talking about the next one?
The next one, not this one, the next one.
But make the decision to date. That's the gift to whoever's in our seat in four years, right? Because we're lining out the process that we didn't really feel like we had.
So when do we start the next budget process?
So it would be in the two cycles. So it would be in '26?
Beginning of 2024.
But it would be the four-year cycle, correct?
Right.
So it would be '26? All of '26.
Okay, okay. All right. Yeah, sure. Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yep, good idea.
Carson? All right. We all actually agreed on that one. Yay! Thank you all for sticking with that conversation. It was a lot to get through, and I appreciate the thoughtfulness and the good, detailed conversation. Director Laird and CO files, do you have everything you need?
I think so. I think we're good.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, and with that, we move on to our last item, which is council talk time. In your packet was the promise from our council retreat, a hopper form for council members to be able to submit their ideas to get scheduled on a council talk time. So we actually led with this process in making sure that we got the form ready for everyone's review, submitted it to the clerk so that it was on the Wednesday before, so that it could get on the agenda or in the packet for Friday, and that's how you saw it in front of you tonight. Happy to take feedback on the form itself, see if it fulfills all the needs that everyone was looking for. I do know we have, we want to add a legal review box as an after item, an after-action item. And just to be clear, council leadership will not review your content, just to be safe on OPMA issues. Jason will, you will submit these to Mr. Brown, and he will alert us that there is something to be brought forward for council talk time, and we will make sure that it happens. That's what the paragraph at the top of that means, that council leadership will get it scheduled. So happy to take feedback on the form. If you all want to go into it tonight, that'd be great. If you want to send an email to Councilmember Kritzer and myself, or actually to Jason with your thoughts, that would be helpful as well. Councilmember Stewart?
First, I want to share some gratitude that council leadership included some of the agenda items for council talk time in the packet. That was a great heads up, and I really appreciated that. I did have a few questions about this form, but I think I understood it incorrectly. So I just want to check my understanding. This, it says, return this form to Jason. Council leadership will schedule time for consideration at a future study session.
Correct.
You really mean for discussion at council talk time?
Correct.
So, okay, so I was, I had...
That was a good note to parse.
Well, because I had concerns about the OPMA thing, but maybe they're resolved, so thank you for clarifying.
Yes. Any other thoughts? And I will say thank you to Councilmember Anderson. She had passed along two separate forms that we pulled apart and used what we liked and dropped what we didn't like to help build this. And I know this was something that was being worked on previously.
Thank you. That's Council President Potty.
Thank you. Councilmember Carson?
I'd just like a little bit of a chance to play with it and...
Sure.
So, I mean, it looks really interesting and cool, so.
Just to go through it real quick, oh, did you want to go ahead?
Just to clarify, we, at the retreat, had talked about having to have a second. Is that not...
So we'd gone back and forth on that. So down at the bottom here, it says council member sponsors, and it says not required. So the form, as we were seeing it, was a potential way to bring forward your idea to see if there was enough council interest. So if it's fully fleshed out, then you can submit it, and we'll get it on talk time. If it's kind of, you're just trying to gauge if there's enough support, that's also an option.
I have a follow-up question on that. How does bringing up something at talk time eliminate... Doesn't that, if you do further work on that and get a sponsor after that, don't you violate OPMA? Because more than three people know about it.
I don't, I would have to get back to you on that. It's a bit late, and my brain's not functioning at its highest.
We could not figure that out. Like, you need to get a sponsor first, or, yeah, so that sequence of events isn't super clear on the OPMA side.
I think as long as you contain your conversation to no more than three after the public.
My understanding would be legislation development, or whatever it's being developed can only be three versus having the conversation and talking about the idea.
Yeah. I think I'm with you.
That's good. Still don't know the answer.
Right, if I may.
Please.
So you could bring it up to the whole council, and then only a certain number work on the details of it
Correct.
without violating OPMA, so.
That's my understanding as well, yeah. And just to run through this, so you would define your problem statement, define your proposal, describe the relationship to city business or services. And then there's this section here where we wanted to make sure that it was connecting with our strategic plan and the budget, or the budget priorities. And we know that these may change over time, so this will have to be updated. There's a section for the timing, if it's urgent timing, or if there's other factors to consider, like budget, and then supporting documentation if you have it. And then there's a council sponsors, if you get them. And then the post-action for us to make sure that we follow up. And as I noted, we would want to put a box in there that is for legal review, which we may send that OPMA question off to Mr. Haney. Any suggestions? Councilmember Stewart?
I had one question on the relationship to city business or proposed city business services. There's a normative question in here that I think may narrow the scope of this use. So how will this create a more adaptive and resilient organization? I think there are ideas that were discussed in the brainstorming at the council retreat that are about regulation that might not be about the organization. So that might be more narrow than we want it to be. I'll just leave that as a possibility. The overall, oh, sorry.
Can you repeat? Because is that the last question that you're reading there?
How will this create a more adaptive and resilient organization? Which if the other parts of the qualifiers were like, fulfills strategic plan, fulfills budget, this feels like a third thing that might not be as in alignment with the other two.
So I think those are just there to help as prompts, not necessarily as requirements. Is that helpful?
Cool. Maybe we should say that then. Yeah. For instance...
Yeah.
Blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
Cool. And then I have a question for council leadership. How does this change the existing... I don't want to say rules, but the existing expectations around council talk time. Currently, anybody can bring anything up at council talk time.
Still an option.
Cool. Thanks.
This is just a more respectful, better way for us to actually do this in a thoughtful way that gives us that route, that avenue, that option, and gives us that... We've, since my time on council, we've kind of not had a process like this. And it's been something that I know we've all talked about wanting to create and develop. And I'm excited that we can all use this, and it also gives us a more concrete way to bring ideas forward and not so easily get that, as Vanessa, Council Vice President, and I described it, that WOMP effect. When you bring something forward and nobody's prepared to talk about it. This gives that time for people to read it in their council packet. They have all the correlating documentation, and so that it will hopefully help prevent folks from feeling like their ideas aren't landing. Councilmember Anderson?
Just to clarify, bad ideas are still welcome.
Truth.
Okay.
All ideas are welcome. No idea is bad. Councilmember Fields?
Okay, so an example of this for me would be something that Councilmember Khan and I are working on in advance of the conference that we're going to in May, which is around transforming Redmond into a safer transportation community other than cars, or, you know, making bikes and wheelchairs and walking safer and more inviting. So that's something that we're working on.
Great.
I can see where this form works for that. One thing that we expected to do is go to staff in advance of going to council and get input from them. So that when we do bring it back to council, we have at least a more informed proposal or more informed direction. There's nothing on here about that, have you, has this been discussed with staff? Or, I guess that's not necessarily necessary, but it does change, it does change the scale a bit, in my opinion.
Change the scale how?
Well, that, the level of, the level of information to council. I mean, well, let me ask it differently. Do we want council members to vet in advance on what, and get that staff perspective?
I think because your particular instance that you are proposing or bringing forward is something that we are already all on board and working towards, I think that is good. I think we did go back and forth with the, like Bellevue, their form has dedicate a certain amount of staff hours to it. And that's something we considered, but we didn't necessarily want to make mandatory on here because that already provides a block, right? So we want, like we said, no idea is a bad idea. We want to encourage ideas and bring them forward. I think in your case, your supporting documentation could be some of that conversation that you have with staff, since it's already something that's on our docket for...
That makes sense. That's the entry into that. I get that. Okay, perfect. Thanks.
All right. I have a couple of notes here for, where's, yeah, Mr. Carson?
I just had a quick question.
Sure.
What, which browser or, or is it software packages the form designed to be used with?
The form is currently in Word. The form is currently in Word.
It's Word, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, it has a forms feature.
I am very much interested in getting this into a web form. We are not there yet, but I think that would make it easier for tracking overall. But I would need to work with.
Just submit, and then it would just.
Correct. Yeah, I wouldn't, I would want to work with Jason and the clerk to make sure that that works with all the other systems that we have to deal with.
Got it. Because it opened up in a browser. I'm like, it doesn't do anything.
I think it's a PD, is it a PDF in here or?
Yeah, I don't know. It's hard to say.
Yeah, currently it is in Word.
Got it. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Seeing no more questions on that, I have some notes to take back for our meeting, council leadership meeting. Luckily, you all have helped me out and filled out your council priorities surveys, so we do not need to go over that. Although I do know there were a couple of questions around the, what council leadership is going to do with that information. And that is going to be built into that same, same matrix that we brought forward last year after the council retreat and where we showed our rankings and our priorities. And we were able to get through a lot of the things that we set as priorities and actually check them off of our to-do list for the year. So that will be merged into that document, and we will also merge out the things that we were able to accomplish last year. So I hope that answers that question. Councilmember Fields?
So I recognize that last year was a budget year. And there was a lot of work. I'm only expressing a concern. I don't have a, a recommendation here. But I, I, I am concerned that some of these fall, will fall below the yellow line, so to speak. And that's not, in my mind, that's not the intent. We already did some vetting of these. So I, I think it's important that we have priorities, but I would not, I would not be in favor of that saying, okay, we're only going to take the top 25 or something like.
Got it.
25%.
Got it, got it. And that, and that is why in the retreat, I opened that conversation with it's not a budget year. So if you have policy ideas, this would be the time. So I don't know that they are all policy ideas, and some of them were repeats from last time. So that just keeps them high on our list, and we can reevaluate from that. Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. I think Councilmember Fields brings up a really good point. And just to acknowledge that at the, we had a packed retreat, and the third major thing in the retreat was the brainstorming of, of these ideas. We were a bit undisciplined, so some things got more airtime in terms of like how excited someone was about describing the idea more. Some things, definitely, we have more to hear if we're going to continue to discuss them. But it was a brainstorm list, and, and we completed a survey with some amount of ranking. But I'm, I'm almost like a little bit uncomfortable with the word priorities at the moment because right now we have a brainstorm list of some things we were excited about and some things that we know are important to us. But there is more work to be done to prioritize.
And I will, I will add that this is only the second year that we've done this kind of brainstorm session from retreat. And I think the key lesson that I've learned is that we need to do our rankings in the moment. Because getting everyone to remember, I mean, I struggled remembering exactly what some of the details were that folks brought forward with their, their ideas. So I think, I know we ran out of time this year. I know we had some really good conversation that we needed to have. But I think prioritizing that and making it so that we bring those ideas forward and rank them in that moment is very important for future retreat sessions if we're going to continue to do this exercise. Okay. Thank you all for that feedback. I appreciate it. Open discussion. Does anyone have anything for council talk time? Councilmember Anderson?
Ballots are out for the King County Behavioral Health Levy, so those are due April 25th.
Great, thank you. I meant to drop mine off tonight, and I forgot it at home. Anybody else? All right, get your ballots in. And with that, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.